And welcome everyone, and I will call our June 5th, 2024 special meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissions to order, and welcome everybody to our meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to hear from citizens regarding our proposed 25 budget. I'll call on Commissioner Keith to provide the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Those of you who know me know that I'm not a long prayer person, but tonight, it's a bit of an honor to have this prayer. Lord, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to gather here, and hope that each one of us remember that 80 years ago, there was 19 20-year-old boys getting on ships to invade Normandy to keep our country free. That's why I don't give long prayers, folks. This is an emotional time for me, and I want to... All of us to remember that while we're here, we can do the government we do because of those young men who sacrificed. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Keith, that's why we're able to be up here today to take these votes and to carry on the county's business, and I always say, "We shall never forget."
I appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you. I'll call on Mr. Greer, the county manager, to explain the Board of Commissioners' procedures for public hearing, and it will be on the board.
Yes, arguments by the proponents and opponents should be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes per each side.
I think that's the wrong one, because this is the three minutes for them, this is not the zoning one.
It's public, public here, yeah. If there's no group representative, each speaker should be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time limit is attained. Rebottos will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of three-minute presentation by each side.
We're going to do something a little bit different, because how many people I got signed up?
We have eight speakers.
Okay, so we got eight speakers, so we're going to give each speaker that three minutes. So that will be 24 minutes as opposed to just doing 10 minutes, because I think everybody should have an opportunity to be speak, to speak and be heard. Ask you to approach your lecture, you'll see the three minutes, you'll see the lights that'll give you a warning, and at the end of that three-minute period, we'd ask everyone to complete what they have to say. So I will open the public hearing and ask the clerk if there are any speakers.
We have eight speakers.
All right, if you will call the first speaker.
Renee Lee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Airborne and Special Operations Museum Foundation is the nonprofit fundraising and marketing partner of the museum. With the U.S. Army, they have served our community for 24 years, proudly preserving the rich history of the American soldiers who served in the airborne and special operations units since World War I. This year, the ASOM surpassed 3 million visitors since opening in 2000 and remains TripAdvisor's number-one attraction in the region. The ASOM is the county's premier destination for educational and cultural events. However, we face a critical challenge. The ASOM Foundation is experiencing a significant loss of major funding, not only from Cumberland County, but from museum theater rentals and the motion simulator, jeopardizing our ability to achieve our revenue targets. A tragic and fatal vehicle accident closed the theater in February 2023, and in November, the motion simulator ceased operation after 23 years. Cost-cutting measures have included a hiring freeze, reduced hours for our retail staff, and restricted advertising spending, which reduces our ability to promote the museum and generate tourism revenue for the county. Operating on government property limits our fundraising activities and requires free museum admission. Here's why county investment matters. Number one, education. The county funding allows the foundation to develop interactive exhibits, host educational programs, and offer vital resources for the public. 3,500 students from 34 county schools and 45 schools in the region have visited the museum just this year. Our programs not only spark curiosity about history, but also inspire a sense of patriotism and civic duty. Economic engine. The ASOM is a cultural gem attracting visitors from the U.S. and just this past week from 10 foreign countries. Visitors generate revenues for hotels, restaurants, and shops, strengthening our community's economic well-being. County funding helps us maintain this world-class museum, ensuring a positive impact on our local businesses and industry. Community pride. The Airborne and Special Operations Museum is a symbol of the Army's rich and diverse history and unwavering support for our military heroes, to include the more than 50,000 veterans who live in this county. Investing in the ASOM is a collective commitment to educate our youth, boost our economy, and honor the legacy of those who have served our nation. Please reconsider our funding request so that together, we honor America's heroes and show future generations what it takes to preserve freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Tiffany Kennedy.
Tiffany Kennedy. Your next speaker.
General Dan McNeil.
Good evening all here, I'm Dan McNeil, a retired American soldier. We all know why we're here, I'll try to keep this very short. 20 years ago, in two days, I took command of U.S. Army Forces Command and was promoted to four-star at the same time. I had a budget of $21.5 billion. I visited Governor Georgia two days later, he was crowing about his budget of $15 billion. I can tell you both of us thought that amount of money was not enough, and I proved that it wasn't enough and to get more. So I say this only because I know you have a difficult task before you. Now, having said that, there's nothing I can say about the Museum Foundation better than what Renee Lane just said, but I simply want to remind you, like it or not, this is a military community. The economic engine for many years has largely been driven by Fort Bragg, now called Fort Liberty. It keeps a lot of people working. This museum is a legacy to the remembrance of those who gave their all, as Commissioner Keith correctly pointed out, 80 years ago. It has anchored the revitalization of downtown Fayetteville, the largest metropolitan area in Cumberland County. I simply would ask that you consider that, and that in amongst your neighborhoods, in your constituency, or people who that museum stands for their legacy. Thank you for your attention, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Sonnenberg.
Thank you for your time this evening. For the past 30 years, the Partnership for Children of Cumberland County has been a committed partner to Cumberland County Government and its agencies, providing over $128 million in state funding. This includes $78.4 million to the Department of Social Services, $36 million to Cumberland County Schools, $5 million to Cumberland County Public Libraries, $4.5 million to the Mental Health Services, and $3.9 to the county public health. We also have provided employment opportunities and economic development in the early childhood workspace, strengthening our partnership with the county and workforce and economic growth, and we work hand-in-hand with your partners all the time. We respectfully requested $300,000 from the county at this point to help us fund our Family Connects program, our newest program, which is a universal newborn home visiting program. It provides prevention services and supports maternal-child health. It shows 50% reductions in emergency room visits, reductions in Child Protective Service investigations, and an increase in completion of maternal six-week postpartum health checks. These impact county agencies and help reduce county costs and the burden on staff. In our budget this year, we approved allocations to county agencies totaling about $4.7 million, which are largely in early care and education services. Our funds are much more limited for family and health services, which is what Family Connects is. We know this request comes at a time of tight budgets as well as revenue reductions. We felt those as well. Our request for this amount of money is only 27% of the program's annual budget. The remainder comes from private grants and Smart Start funding. These dollars are going to direct services to babies and their families. 86% of the children that we have served over the last three years through our regional pilot are Cumberland County residents whose babies were born at Cape Fear Valley Health System, and the focus for our next year is Cumberland County because of the loss of some federal funding. The partnership's presence is ingrained in the county's economic and community fabric. With the support that you might be able to give us with this investment, we can continue supporting our youngest children. We welcome any questions you have or any further discussions as we continue to help build a prosperous community of businesses and residents, most of all, our babies. If we begin with them and their families, we can change the trajectory for them as well as increase the economic vitality of this community and its health services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Germany Captain.
Our next speaker.
Catherine Glass.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Glass, and I'm the Accounting and Operations Manager at the Airborne and Special Operations Museum. We're asking that our funding currently be reconsidered so that we can continue to operate at our best to provide an experience geared towards the memory of those who have served past, such as my father, a Vietnam veteran, present and future. I went from being a local child who enjoyed the exhibits in our well-known simulator to being a part of the nonprofit foundation whose mission is to engage the public to fully appreciate the sacrifices that the generations of airborne and special ops soldiers have made to safeguard the freedoms of our nation. Funding aids in fulfilling our mission to educate, engage, and inspire generations to come, as well as the salaries of us who work behind the scenes to do the necessary tasks to keep everyday operations flowing. Tuesday through Sunday, we provide visitors with a rich cultural experience relevant to our own military community. I don't have enough time to share the countless stories of walking the museum and greeting visitors and finding out that their stories are told within the exhibits there at our museum. Furthermore, the ASOM has cultivated a much-needed relationship between our supportive civilian community as well as our military families. Our goal at the ASOM is providing educational experiences as well as programs to the public, such as our Lindsay Lecture Series, which since last April has garnered attendance of over 280 people. Our field of honor that goes up this fall in the Mogadishu Memorial Mile. We hope funding is reconsidered, and you all take the time to join us and experience why we are the number-one tourist attraction in Fayetteville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mac Healy.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. I entered this discussion with probably more history in the airborne special operations than anybody else. I remember distinctly the day that my father called General Jim Lindsay, the commander of the base, and said, "You need to come over here, we need to talk about this," because there were a bunch of museums at Fort Bragg which were all raising money. They talked about having one large, wonderful museum. That was going to be at Fort Bragg. At the time, I happened to be in charge of downtown development. Six of us got in a room, including the city manager and the county manager, and said, "Why don't we move this thing downtown?" Six of it, not me, but the other guys in the room made this happen, and we brought it downtown instead of being on Bragg. Now, think about this, back then, Bragg was open. Had we not done that, this museum would not be allowed to have the visitors that we have. The second part I come here for, so it's very personal to me, I have to tell you that, but the second part I come is economic development. The general said we were a military town, and that's true. The second part we need to all admit is that we're not a rich town. We don't have a lot of excess money to throw around. Economic development of an operation like this is critical. You all know that we're getting ready to build, we'll break ground this year on another museum at the top of the hill. We paid a consultant to come in at the beginning of that process, and he said, "The reason you'll be a success is that we're getting a critical mass here. We've got airborne special operations, we've got Botanical Garden. We'll have the History Center up there, and now you all are fighting hard to have a forming art center." We'll have, we get a critical mass, and people will stay here, they'll shop here, they'll eat here, they'll gas their cars up here. This is the time to double down. Because we are not a wealthy county, the tourism can balance that budget. Maybe it can't balance it, I'm not in your seat, I can't answer that, but it will help to balance it. Couple of hundred thousand more people not coming into this town is detrimental, incredibly detrimental to us. And the other thing about losing the association is this. We put on events. I remember the year that we had the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We hosted that there at the ASOM. We have Cumberland County Business Council. We've had the Cumberland County Education Foundation. We've had the Cumberland County Schools. We host numerous hails and farewells. We honor groups like the Triple Nickel and those people that made it possible, as Jimmy said, for all of us to be sitting here today. That's what we do. Without us, it doesn't exist. We also host funerals, unfortunately, Jim Lindsay passed away recently, and we had his funeral there. But I could tell you what it meant to his family and everyone else to be honored there at this place. That's what, that's part of what we do as an organization. So I ask you please to reconsider our funding, and thank you.
Sterling McCormick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sterling McCormick, and I'm a volunteer at the Airborne and Special Operations Museum. I'm also a 30-year retired Army veteran with most of my Army career right here at now Fort Liberty, and I spent another 20 years civil service. I'm also a Fayetteville native and attended elementary school through high school here. We volunteer because we are passionate about this cause and want to make a difference and give back to the community. It concerns us greatly to hear that funding for the ASOM may be in jeopardy, and since we have a short time to speak, I will briefly state a few important items from my standpoint as a volunteer that I hope will help your decision to not cut the ASOM funding but continue to support and find ways to help us, help this very important effort. We are the all-American city. The ASOM is the number-one tourist attraction and an important link between the Fayetteville-Cumberland County area and Fort Liberty. I can think of no other activity in our area that has busloads almost on a daily basis of visitors specifically visiting the ASOM. As volunteers, we personally welcome our visitors with information about ASOM, distributed our brochures, to include Fayetteville Welcome Center maps and other local literature. If asked, we will also direct visitors to restaurants and other activities in the area. If you visit the ASOM volunteer desk, you will see these items on display. We assist family members in finding the paver stones honoring their military members. These pavers are not just stones in place around the museum, but sentimental memorials, mostly purchased by family members honoring heroes and organizations of all services. We have domestic visitors as well. The Airborne and Special Operations Museum exhibits are a large part of our personal Cumberland County Fayetteville history because of military connection and honor to our veterans' past contributions and sacrifices. Veterans and other patrons constantly return to the museum store to purchase unique items. From my view, the limited staff and volunteers work very hard to be good stewards of the funding received, and it is extremely vital that funding continues for the Airborne and Special Operations Museum because this museum is key for all of the reasons we have mentioned and for our historical legacy as a very important service and asset to our entire region. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers.
Okay, there are no more speakers. Just let me do this because I did forget. Vice Chairwoman Stewart is on the line, and she has heard all of the comments and is included in this. So with that, with there being no more speakers, I'll close the public hearing, and I will recess the meeting, and we will go to the Fifth Floor for a discussion and our budget work session. So we are in recess.
So we are in recess.
So the total adjustments for the general fund, a total reduction of $2,578,980. The total amended general fund budget would be $392,827,964. For the opioid settlement fund, we received some, a grant that was approved that we need to go ahead and appropriate so they can start to fund the program July 1st on the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2025. That totaled $447,149. Total opioid recommend amended opioid settlement fund budget being $1,799,165. Total adjustments to the manager's recommended budget, total reduction of $2,131,831.
It's amendment A.
Amendment A. I'm sorry.
You got it?
Okay. And then, so the new total for all funds budget would be $582,176,600.
Anybody have any questions with regard to that and those changes? It is a budget work session. Does anybody have a wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Keith.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take a moment to advocate for the Airborne Special Operations Museum. And my advocacy is not only for the museum itself, but it's, it's the impact of the museum. And it's the impact of the museum on our community economically. It's the impact of our museum on our veterans that served. It's an impact, it's an impact on our community, on the education that it provides. So many times, the purpose of history, and we've heard it all before, that, you know, those who do not remember their history are deemed to repeat it in that matter. And those stories need to be told, not only to remember those young men and women who did those things, but also to educate those who are coming over so, so that they remember and they acknowledge. If we didn't remember all the significant things that happened, we would be making the same mistakes over and over again. So I would, I would tell you that yes, veterans matter. The museum matters, but education matters, history matters, and this airborne special operation matters. So I would, I would really like for the board to consider imagining our community without this facility for one moment and how much we would lose, and it would certainly be more than what they're asking for tonight. So I would like for the board to consider reinstating the $85,000, which is well below what their request was, but looking for the $85,000 for this budget. So if I could, I would like to make a motion.
Let me see. I think Commissioner Stewart wanted to weigh in.
Okay.
Well, I got you, Commissioner Stewart, if you go ahead.
I absolutely agree with everything that Commissioner Keith said, definitely not taking away anything as it relates to education. But I just want to clarify something. We gave money to the Airborne Museum from the ARP, correct? And it was, what the ARP committee stated that if we gave from one area, we would not give in another area. Is that not correct?
That was my understanding.
And so I just want to make sure that we are, we got to, we got to be fair across the board.
Wait a minute. Commissioner Jones has, I'll come back to you. As soon as Commissioner Stewart finish.
It's got to be fair across the board. And I know that if I'm not mistaken, we had rejected some because they got money from somewhere else, and we just have to maintain integrity and transparency. That's all I wanted to say.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. I just kind of want to reiterate what she said. Let me just let it be known, I'm a very strong supporter. My father's retired chief one of the five. My mom retired, you know, from the school system on 36 years as a teacher, so I'm pro military. But I did want to get some clarification, and for those out of fairness that are listening, that's what I wanted to be clear on too. I don't serve particularly on the A, you know, on UOAS committee. However, I have, of course, sat in on some of those, and we do want to be fair across the board. And again, like I said, I'm definitely pro military, my dad being retired officer, 36 years, my mom DOD. But I, I want also, out of fairness, this is a public, open work session for those that maybe didn't know the other meetings. Can someone please reinstate what is already been given, you know, for those that are listening online prior from the fundings that have already been given? And so we do want to keep things, you know, fairly balanced out. So, and I know the great work they do. Again, I'm a strong supporter, I go to their events and military advocate myself. So for those that maybe don't know the past history, can you spend a little time to say what has been given? And I do remember at that meeting, although I'm not on UOAS committee, that that was stated, and we do want to try to balance things out, and I thank you for that time.
So in Nash's budget, they got $85,000. And then Ty, if you tell us what they got out of the last op funding.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-five thousand.
Okay. All right. Mr. Keith. Commissioner. And although that was stated a number of times that we were trying to be fair, we have to look at the impact, and that was not a hard, fast rule that we looked at. We looked at a number of different agencies. Some of them impacted the community greatly, and some of them impacted the community at a lesser extent. But we did try to be compassionate to what has happened. You heard, you heard that this is an event, and during COVID, it was shuttered. It was shuttered. They could not open, and then when they had the accident, they could not open again. You know, so we have to be, we have to be mindful and compassionate about what is going on. To their point, if, if it would have been a hard, fast rule that we said, oh, if you get money, then if you apply that, then you're going to be locked out of any consideration for our community funding, I'm not so sure most people would have done it. And I will sacrifice this, if the, if the board would accept, that yes, they got $25,000. And, you know, for the great things they did, $25,000. Instead of 85, would the board consider 60,000 to bring them back to where they were at the current matter of $85,000? Please, I'd make that motion if there's no more discussion.
I think she's.
Commissioner Stewart.
Commissioner Keith, I think it's unfair to say that that wasn't a hard rule at this It was a hard rule, and I want to say that it was a hard rule that you initiated. I think that it came from, from you, and I just think that it's unfair to say that it's not a hard rule when people have been rejected for receiving money. And I'm not saying that it's not, you know, we can't say that other people don't have as much of an impact, because I think that that's, you know, that's relative. But that, I just wanted to say that. It was my understanding that it was a hard rule. And Commissioner Adams, I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Jones.
I just had one more question. For this hard rule, forgive me because my computer's out and Dan has to fix that, what was the purpose of reduction, reduction of the, from the 85,000 to 25,000? Was there something?
No, what the reduction, they got 85 in last year's budget, and then got another 25.
Right. And so what their fundings giving, I thought in that meeting, but don't quote me on it, there was a stating with a reason, purpose behind that, there was some other fundings that were provided? Because again, I just want the community to be clear on that, because I understand what this is, but that is, you know, a big, major difference, and I can't remember, but I do remember in the meeting, there was a reason behind that, and if the community can be informed of that, please.
Well, I don't know about that, but I would, Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, sir. Kind of funny, I didn't know what amount they had, and I was going to ask that, and then it got filled in by being 25, so I wrote down 60, question mark, before Jimmy mentioned it. The good news, he just found us $2.6 million. So, you know, the, the bad news is now everybody wants, wants more.
As long as he found it, we just moved it over. We brought some back in.
You found it on a different cabbage leaf.
Because that SRO and all that money may still have to be expended somewhere, but.
That's what I, that's what I could, I could agree with funding him at the 85, which is minus 25 down to the 60. But I wasn't, I'm not on the committee, and I didn't know about any, any rules and stuff.
All right. I weigh in, because you remember last year, I was the one that was going down to zero and then came back up to the 85, because, and I know, I don't know if Commissioner Keith was here, but I know Commissioner Fairclough and probably Commissioner Council, is that this whole money from the county over was because of the sequester, and that's when the Airborne Museum was going to go down to three days a week, and I think the city and the county came in to give some funds to be able to keep that open. I don't think it was ever to be this money to go on in perpetuity to, for whatever. And I want people to understand that this doesn't impact the museum. This is a foundation. This is not the museum. This money is not to keep the museum open. The museum is going to be open regardless, because it's the government, the government pays to keep this museum open. This is the foundation. I've always talked about it, and I've talked to it all the time, is that, one, we need capacity to build more nonprofits and let them grow. Two, I heard what they said, we can't do any fundraising at the museum, but you can do fundraising all out in the community. The Child Advocacy Center puts on a masquerade ball, they put on a lip sync, they do all of that to raise funds. All of these nonprofits are out here raising funds. I think partnership has, everybody's, so if you don't raise funds and you just eventually just think that this is, I'm entitled to this every year, I just have a problem with that, and so to be able, for other nonprofits to be able to participate, I think you got to do that. I don't know how long I've been on this board, but I'm just going to go back 10 years. If you've been getting 125,000 a year for the last 10 years, that's over a million dollars, you're going to tell me a nonprofit can't function off a million dollars over 10 years, we've got some issues. I would not be in favor. You can make your motion, but I would just let you know where I am. Commissioner Keith.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we increase the funding of the Airborne Special Operations Museum to $16,000.
See, I'll second.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moving second, all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Keith and Commissioner Booth.
All those opposed?
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Council, Chairman Adams, and Vice Chairman Stewart.
Any other commissioners have anything in terms of the work session? If not.
Mr. Chairman, I saw where you made the statement earlier when this money, SROs and all this whole thing was moved back into the county's checkbook rather than sheriff's checkbook.
Yes.
What if I if we move it back to the taxpayer's checkbook, take a penny off the tax rate?
I would tell you that in terms of that.
Just tax a penny, just go back 2.5 million dollars back. It's about a penny.
What happens is, if this were, if we moved it back out of his budget, because if we didn't, if we left it in the budget, we'd have to do some kind of budget ordinance during the year. That's not to say that the school board may not need it in terms of what they eventually do. That's the only reason I moved it out of the sheriff's budget, back into our budget. That's the only reason. It wasn't to be able to, to spend it on any of that. Eventually down the road, they're going to have to make, it's a school board decision as to who they end up doing security with, but we know there's going to be some security somewhere. And I would tell, even when we were talking, if you listen to the radio this morning, Greg West said they've got money in their budget. But according to how this happens on such a short notice, I don't know what is, because we did, we were not privy to it. We weren't privy to any of this before it happened. But I think we want to be at least in a position that if we need to do something, we can do something, Commissioner Fairclough. So I would not look to be able to do that. I think when the rebound comes, we have an opportunity to be able to do that and give back to our citizens. Commissioner Keith.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with that, to the point of, you know, our school system has the responsibility, they contracted with the sheriff's office to do this. So that money should not only come back in our budget, probably should be earmarked for school safety in some way. That program does come around, because our school system is more, they may like to think that it's just education, but it's education, it's, it's public health with nurses. it's public health with nurses, and it's social services, it's sports. But most parents, they want to make sure when their kids go to school that they are educated and they're safe. And so I think it would be short sighted for us to not keep that money into the, into our fund earmarked for safety.
And I guess maybe, I just want, yeah. So when I suggested that to the manager, it wasn't for us to spend it. It's not their first step to go out and spend. We were just moving it out of here. But to cap it into that line item.
Yes.
So it's still in that line item, and not just in the general fund for us to say, we're going to spend it here, there, and everywhere. And so, so that's, that's the main reason for that. I hope that, that gets you. Commissioner Booth?
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank Mr. Fairclough. Eight years, I've never heard anyone say, let's give taxes back. So the fact that you even brought it up, I'd like to thank you on that. And if not now, if not now, not ever. So I appreciate you mentioning it.
I think Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Keith have always talked about when we hit the rebound, to go back down to revenue neutral, which is a tax deduction. So we have reduced taxes, Commissioner Booth, in that. Because one thing is, Commissioner Fairclough has always been in that, and I think Commissioner Keith was that. So, yeah. I will tell you that, again, I was, I think the Budget and Performance Department, I got it right, didn't I? I got it right, lady. Okay. Y'all should have corrected me a long time ago. I don't know why y'all kept letting me do that. That is not the Finance Department, y'all. That is the Budget and Performance Department. And I want to make sure. They did, they do an awesome job. Thank you so very much for what you all did and putting this budget together. Manager Greer and his staff, thank you for, I think it's an awesome budget that you put together. Again, you know, I was up here at the last budget work session. Hopefully somewhere in the future, we will get to a conversation with the school system about doing some teacher supplements. Again, saying, we're third highest in the state on teacher attrition, and we just can't continue to do that with the number of twenty-seven failing schools. We need to keep those teachers here. And so hopefully, somewhere in the future, we can have that discussion. We did them by the formula, and I think what you did was, you know, I'm going to just tell you, I looked all around the state as everybody's doing their budgets. We are, in terms of what we did for the school board, much closer than a whole lot of places. You know, Wake County has a whole lot of money, but they were about twenty million dollars short of what their school system asked for. Same thing in Nick and all over. So awesome job for the Budget and Performance and the manager to be able to get to that point, to be able to do that. We understand our school systems are important. Hopefully, as we continue to bring corporations and businesses into this community, that our tax base will increase. And if we do that, it, it works. With that, I think that there was a motion or a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-31811A. Is there a motion? So it's been moved in second. All those in favor?
I don't know what we need to go in there.
That's your name.
All right, we are back in open session. We had you asked us to come out of closed session. We're back in open session. And we are, I guess, the attorney with the language that needed to be added to the Comer County budget ordinance as to, I think, Commissioner Booth with the retirement. And I've handed it over to the manager.
Okay. Do you want me to go through the ordinance?
Yes, you can.
Okay. We've gone to Section 1 adoption of the fiscal year 2025 budget, the adjustments we have gone through. Section 2 tax levity, tax leverage fees and other charges, the average law of tax rate, countywide average law of tax rate hereby adopted and levy at seventy-nine point nine cents per one hundred dollars valuation. Special recreation tax remains at five cents per one hundred dollars valuation. The solid waste disposal fee will be one thirty per household annually. The solid waste disposal fee will be one thirty per household annually. The fire district tax will remain the same at fifteen cents per one hundred dollars valuation. The fee schedule has also been included. The current expense for Cumberland County Board of Education will be eighty-nine million six hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The current expense funded for Fayetteville Technical Community College will be fifteen million four hundred and sixty-eight, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. This under personnel, this budget funds to complete a full year of the classification and pay plan as approved. Under board compensation, the total compensation will be two hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The per diem will change for commissioners from one hundred dollars per day. Other benefits, county commissioners are offered the opportunity to participate in the county's health and dental insurance plan, flexible medical spending account and life insurance plans. Participation in county's pharmacy and medical clinic is also available. Continued participation in the county's health insurance plan upon separation from the county is based on previous criteria. And then we seek to enroll commissioners in the local government employer's retirement system to be effective July 1, 2024 contingent upon approval by the local government employer's retirement system to include only retirement insurance benefits pursuant to Section 153A-93, Section D, Paragraph D. Budget policies that will change and under budget policy, Section 5, the collection agreements allow the county to collect taxes for all the jurisdictions within the county. And then, and that's all of you on the budget ordinance.
We need to read it again.
Okay. So you have that in front of you. You saw the budget ordinance, went through the budget ordinance. I can get a motion to approve the Cumberland County budget ordinance for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
I mean.
You got a motion, you got a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Commissioner Stewart was over there. And that will be the budget for Cumberland County for 2025.
No question.
Yes, ma'am?
Because this is it. We're not fooling with this anymore.
No, ma'am. That's it. That passes.
Okay. I mean, I didn't mean it that way. I'm sorry.
Well, that cancels what I changed in May. We have to, all the rest of them. But cancels all the rest of the budget meeting. No more budget meetings. Nothing, nothing. The seventeenth. The seventeenth is our next meeting.
The thirteenth. Agenda session on the thirteenth. Dinner session.
Okay.
Got an agenda session on the thirteenth. All right. So. The motion has been moved at seven. All those in favor?
That is unanimous. We are adjourned.